Of the Board of Trustees for August 8th, if we give first start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. First, we have public comment. If you have something, come on up to the podium.
I have a document that I prepared with some information that was pulled from meeting minutes. Or not meeting minutes, but the board packet.
There she is.
My name is Mark Antokli. I live on 1550 Georgetown Drive in Bloomfield Township. I presented the board members with the document. It has the quarterly financial report. It's for Water and Sewer. On the report in the board packet, July 25, there was listed expenses of 3.571 million. I went back through the previous approved payments regarding vouchers and payroll. And for SAQW and the Oakland County payments, you'll see the dates that the payments were made, the check number and the amounts. Comes up to 3.5, just over 3.5 million. I hope the township board will redress this issue and give us some numbers that are more consistent with what we would expect, especially considering on the water bill, it said the township would be paying over 7 million for operating expenses. So there's only a $70,000 variation between the two items. The second item, I'd like to thank Haley Stevens for coming and speaking to the township and for supporting First Amendment rights. Haley Stevens was allowed to speak for 10 minutes during public comment. I believe that accommodation and privilege should be provided to all citizens coming in to speak or residents, especially since the accommodation was already provided to someone else. Next, I wanted to comment on central services. We've seen a big swing in central services fees in from 2020 to 2023, especially for senior services. It's up almost 80%. Public safety is up almost 70%. The village police is down slightly, and the village fire is down 40%. I think the residents deserve to understand why these variations exist. To go on, Water and Sewer is down about 15%. Building inspection is up slightly. Road fund is up about 10%. So I believe we should understand what's the variation, what's happening? Why is village fire so good at reducing those central service fees? Maybe that's something that can help out the senior center.
Mr. Antokli, will we wrap it up, please?
Again, I request an accommodation which was provided to Haley Stevens.
That's an elected official bringing information, but thank you very much for your public comment.
During public comment and during the election season.
Is there anybody else here to speak?
60 days before.
Is there anyone? Come on up. And thank you also to Marsha Gershenson, Chuck Moss, Rosemary Bear, and all the elected officials who make time and understand they can't be an agenda item, but give us all that information. Thank you to all of you if you're watching.
Mary Alice Laduke, resident. After violating the public trust by wrapping a public safety increase with a renewal, you now want an increase for the senior center and a renewal of the Safety Path Fund. I say no, and here is why. The township now has 2.6 million in general funds that you will not have to spend as a transfer to public safety. Use these funds to support the Safety Path fixes and the senior center. On the Safety Path, there are reserve funds that should be used without the need to tap new funds. ADA mandates have been in place for decades. Why weren't compliant sidewalks built in the first place? Why are we spending money to fix what should have been constructed right originally? On the senior center, the 2023 budget is outrageously high, with a 49% increase for salaries and benefits, a 42% increase in contracted services, and a whopping 146% increase in capital improvements, just to name a few of the increases. The fees for residents and non-residents are not coming close to covering the cost to deliver services. We have an administrator with a six-figure salary and a car. Is this necessary? Why are there not more shared services with the Birmingham Senior Group? What does the township do with the fees that you collect from the senior center for services like payroll and IT? There is no annual report on the senior center with data that is important to taxpayers. Why? Other departments provide reports. Elected officials in Bloomfield Township have an endless need to raise and spend taxpayer money without blinking. As a community, we must stop and look at outsourcing functions to Oakland County or private entities as taxpayers cannot continue to be the piggy bank for the spending whims of employees and trustees. Where is your prudence? Where is your cost cutting? Where is a master plan? Many of you have been in office for decades, yet there are no proposals for cost-cutting-only spending. The last master plan expired in 2014, so we have been operating for eight years with no agreed direction or new plan of action. This must stop. As a community, we need to reevaluate what we can afford to spend money on, where it should be spent, and the timing of change. We cannot continue to do business the way it has been done. We need a new master plan with the input of a wide range of residents for how to operate in a cost-effective manner going forward. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak for public comment? Okay, with that, I will close public comment. Before we get into the meeting, I wanted to take a moment of silence. The Bloomfield Township, as well as Seacrest Wardle and all those who knew Mike Solhany. Sorry, there are more important things in the world right now, I know, but this is a friend of ours who lost his life because of the recklessness of somebody under the influence of drugs. So today, think about his family and his friends who we mourned him today at his visitation. And there is, if you don't, for him tomorrow, but please, if we could take a moment of silence for Mike Solhany. Thank you. Another thing we want to get to before we take on the agenda items is to thank the community. We appreciate everybody who showed up and voted. It was a resounding, almost 63%, that did come out for the millage vote, and we truly appreciate. Sometimes the loudest voice, you know, you assume is the voice of the majority, and it was good to see that people valued our public safety and came out to vote, and we appreciate that very much. And I normally don't address public comment, but there were too many things to address, but there's one in particular that is constantly mentioned and is incorrect. The administrators do not have cars. We were the first administrators ever, although, you know, previous administrators, in fact, even some that ran on another ticket, did have cars. We immediately got rid of that because that obviously wasn't expensive. It never should have happened. So thank you to Brian and Martin, who also joined in on the fact that none of us actually have cars. So I know that was said, but just to put that out there. That hasn't existed since 2020 when we started. So thank you so much. And we'll go ahead and start the agenda. So first, we have the board minutes of July 25, 2022. We all had a chance to look over the minutes. If there are no changes, I'd look for a motion. So moved?
Moved.
By trustee Murray, support by, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Trustee Showstaff, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That does pass. All right, next is to consider some happy news here. To consider approval of a proclamation in memory of Ben Crane and his visionary services to Bloomfield Township. Do you want the family to come up?
If you're comfortable there, you would come forward. You're good there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm Carrie LaSalle. I'm the new Director of Cable and Community Relations, and it is my privilege to present this proclamation tonight. In a day and age where a few companies control a lot of communication in the world, local cable is critical to providing transparency in government and community program programming. And it's my responsibility to carry your husband's legacy forward, and I want you to know I take that responsibility very seriously. And again, it's my privilege to read this proclamation. "A proclamation in memory of Ben Crane for his visionary services to Bloomfield Township." Whereas Ben Crane was a resident of Bloomfield Township for 49 years. Whereas Ben Crane was a passionate supporter of Bloomfield Township, especially the Cable and Community Relations Department. Whereas Ben Crane was a visionary leader as the chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee from its inception in the 1980s until his untimely death in 2022. Whereas Ben Crane provided leadership in the negotiations between Bloomfield Township and Booth Communications, which resulted in Bloomfield Township's first cable television franchise in 1984. Whereas Ben Crane provided expertise in equipping the Bloomfield Township Cable Studio with technical equipment, which led to BCTV becoming one of the area's most sophisticated cable studios. Whereas Ben Crane inspired both community programming and government programming that set high standards for local television. Whereas Ben Crane led the effort to enter into a contractual agreement with the Birmingham Area Cable Board, which provided Bloomfield Township not only with a steady stream of income, but increased programming opportunities. Whereas Ben Crane served as an ambassador between Bloomfield Township and the Birmingham Area Cable Board, linking the two communities in common programming goals and efficient public services. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees formally recognizes Ben Crane for his decades of passionate leadership that improved the Bloomfield Township community. Be it known to all reading this proclamation that it was adopted by the Board of Trustees on August 8, 2022, and included in the minutes as a permanent record.
We do have some people here who knew your father and your husband personally who would like to talk.
I was privileged to know Ben for over 15 years. There was one word that struck a chord with me in this proclamation, which was inspiration. And I actually knew Ben through his other love, which was the University of Pennsylvania. And we were both alumni of Penn. And we would have our biggest event of the year would be the new student picnic, where all of the new high school students who were going to Penn in the fall would come. And Ben would make sure that he met and talked with every single one of them and asked them not only where they were from, but what they were going to study and what they wanted to do at Penn. And that was, and what motivated them. So he was truly an inspiration for me, working with the Penn alumni group, but also in getting involved with the township, he was instrumental in providing guidance and mentorship. So I really appreciate him and I miss him. And I would be happy to support this proclamation.
Unfortunately, I didn't have the opportunity to personally know Ben, but I actually knew him by reputation, and knew him to be kind, to be generous with his time and his wisdom. And I think as a community, we are truly better off because of Ben's time with the township and his knowledge, so we thank him.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a motion.
And then is there a motion to accept the proclamation?
I would love to make that motion in honor of Ben and his memory.
Motion by trustee Showstaff, support by treasurer keeps. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That does pass. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
You're with us.
Did you want to say anything?
I just, oh. Well, I don't have to go there and say, but you know what? He was such a huge character to me, and not only the meetings and things to do, but we'd go to Birmingham Park on Wednesday nights in the winter of the summer, and we'd go to the, you know, the dance for, and hope that it was always exciting and wonderful. I have great memories of that, and I know how much we loved and enjoyed what he did for our town. It's been a township since our second home, and 46 years in one home and now raising us another. And I know I love the township, and we love to be back to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for sharing him with us in the community.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is to review the Jan Roncelli Safety Path Millage Renewal Proposal, and Director Olivia Wilson-Bodri is here.
Okay, so good evening. So we're here to talk about the Jan Roncelli Safety Path and the proposed millage renewal. As you're aware, the first millage was passed in 1998. At that time, shortly after the millage was passed, the master plan was developed in 1999, updated in 2008, and then again in 2018. The Safety Path system is quite large. It consists of over 70 miles of safety path. Along with that is roughly 82,000 square feet of retaining walls, 25,000 feet of fencing, and approximately 1,180 ramps at road intersections. This is a map of the existing path being in black lines. The red dash lines and the numbers are the proposed routes in the master plan. The green sections are the proposed routes for construction in the season. In fact, we've completed 17 and 15, which is the section on Telegraph and Lhasa Road between 14 Mile and Lincoln. And the rest of this year consists of filling in some gaps on Woodward Avenue, south of Big Beaver, and then also extending the path on the east side of Telegraph Road from Hickory Grove up to Franklin. And then the blue section is the TAP grant, which addresses connectivity of the path system at the intersection of Square Lake and Telegraph, which has been difficult over the years, including, and this project would include two crossings on Telegraph, as well as connecting basically that northwest corner to the rest of the system that the township has. Looking at costs for the remaining master plan paths is approximately $15,800,000. A couple of weeks ago, or maybe it was a month, a couple of months ago, time flies. We were, I was here for the ADA compliance master plan, which looked at all of our road crossing sections with the Safety Path and what intersections complied with the ADA program. That master plan identified that approximately just over $5 million worth of work to bring the existing path into compliance. We also have an annual repair program, which consists of concrete repairs. And then we also have a retaining wall program. The retaining wall program doesn't happen on an annual basis. Right now, we're running about every other year where we generate enough locations in a big enough project to take on up repairing, replacing, and in some cases, removing the retaining walls. And then also, we have annual maintenance costs not related to construction. This would be mowing the grass along the path, cleaning the path itself with debris and leaves and sediment, fixing some fences. We have in-house staff. The DPW is able to do some fence repairs. We also have staff covered for their work associated with the Safety Path program and then the associated staff costs. And all these costs are based on $20,22. So in general, and I say general because depending on the scope of the project, the amount of repairs that we have, these numbers do fluctuate. So I'm talking about on a general five-year trend, because this is a five-year millage. The general trend is to allocate $1.1 million for new Safety Path. Now, that may fluctuate some years where we want to do a certain program that maybe is more than that. So we will do a smaller program one year and a larger program the next year. The last couple of years, we've been wanting to bring down our reserves, so there've been some larger projects. But in general, this is what we go for. And then approximately $400,000 per year being the combined concrete and retaining wall repair and replacement program. But like I said, we don't necessarily do a retaining wall program every year, so this is just kind of averaging the costs between the two. We always do concrete repair for slabs every year. And then approved by the board, when we brought the ADA compliance plan to the board, was allocating $500,000 a year to bring the existing path crossings up to compliance, and then approximately $200,000 per year for other safety costs, which would be in-house expenses for brush removal, mowing the path, the grass adjacent to the path, fence repair, removing the debris. For instance, if we get calls from residents, if there's brush hanging over, I just got one today where a resident reached out to us concerned about some vegetation hanging over a path. It was blocking the path. That's something that our in-house staff would either address or we would have a contractor address that to clear it. And so that's the other component of it. So I think later on the agenda, the board will be voting on the millage language, but in the presentation, I just included it for reference, but it is to be addressed by the board later on the agenda. So up for consideration later on the agenda is to continue the Safety Path program with a request for a millage renewal. And the date for consideration by the voters for including the language on the ballot would be for the November 8, 2022 election. That pretty much wraps it up for me.
Anyone want to start with questions?
Just one question.
Yeah.
Can you address, Olivia, how the ADA compliance requirements have changed since the inception of the program? And actually, there have been many changes, but how have they changed, and when did they change?
I apologize. I don't have the dates down, but ADA was, the program, I think, was developed in the 90s, but it wasn't until 2010 where the guidelines were provided. And so most of our ADA compliance areas are paths that are before that 2010 timeline, where we were actually given the guidance on what are the goals that we need to meet to make this path accessible for all. So most of the compliance program, we're starting in the older areas first. The area that was slated for this year was in like the southwestern corner of the township, which was some of the earlier path and a small section on Squirrel Road. Unfortunately, we attempted to take bids for the ADA compliance program this year, and we received zero bids. So my goal is to expand the program for next year, add in the work that we had scheduled for this year into the work that we have planned for next year, and hopefully get our requests for bids out as early as possible. But it's not, it's not an unfortunate, it's an unfortunate, non-surprise, because we, as you're aware, we have only been receiving one bid for the Safety Path Repair Program, as well as the 2022 Safety Path Program this year.
Thank you.
And then also, it's surprising to some that it's not grandfathered in. I know some people had reached out to me by email asking why we're fixing old paths because they're grandfathered, but do you want to talk about how that's not true? That you do have to actually change things and make things safe for people?
Yeah, I mean, we have to, we have, the township owns this asset.
Yeah.
And we have to make sure our asset is maintained and accessible for all. And our attorney was shaking his head about it being grandfathered in. And so hence us having a program where we can start addressing these on a larger scale.
Well, in one of the previous meetings, that's how we came up with the $500,000 per year, because we only have so many years to come into compliance. So that's trying to get us on that proper path to be able to have that completed in the right timeframe.
I'm not aware of a deadline, per se, but the fact that we have a program available, we have a study, we're moving forward to address these, is why we're moving forward with that.
I just have one question. So you said that the guidelines were released in 2010? Is that something that they're like updating regularly? Is it something like we could see changes again down the line? Or, I mean, that's probably a hard question for you, because you can't foresee what they're going to do, but...
I would have to reach out to people who are more in touch with the ADA for a response on that. I apologize. I don't have a good response for that.
And the only reason why I'm asking is because obviously this is, we're, oh, sure, sorry about that. We're looking at a 10-year time period here, so obviously it's like we don't want to do the work and then something else comes up that we'll have to address, so.
Yeah.
But I understand the liability issues and why we have to be in compliance, so thank you, Olivia.
Another thing, too, on the ADA, some people had reached out and said, well, it shouldn't cost that much to just put these pads at the end. Do you want to highlight how that's not what ADA is? It's actually changing the slope for wheelchairs to come. It's not just the orange pad at the end.
Yeah, definitely. There are certain requirements when we approach an intersection with the slope of the path or the grade of the path. There's restrictions that we've been constructing the path for quite a while to meet. For instance, being less than an 8% grade. And when you get to a crossing, there has to be a flat landing for people to safely be able to rest and not move without their own will. And so it is more than just putting the terracotta-colored truncated domes, the textured spots. Some of the locations we have simply need just that, but some locations do require that we go back farther up the path to make it flatter, which in some cases where the existing grade is steeper, we may have to add some retaining walls to maintain the natural grade and drop the path down. So each location has to be considered individually. So without a doubt, there are some locations that simply need the truncated domes, what they're called, the coloring. But other locations will need significant amount more work to bring the grade of the path into compliance, so there is a flat space for people to stop at before crossing the road. And then also, this project includes bringing the pedestrian signals into compliance. You know, if you walk around, you may see where the push buttons may be located on a pole or existing light pole instead of on a separate post within so many inches of the path. So those will have to be brought into compliance as well. So each location, the report did break out the compliance locations with signalization and without signalization. So some of those locations, once we wrap in signalization, would cost more than other locations where we have to do very minimal work.
Trying to think of any other questions that have come. Another one has come up of why is this five instead of 10? And part of that is so that it's a renewal, not a new, but also gives us a chance, if things change, to trustee Fakey's point, it allows us to adjust, but also eventually get to the point where it would lower and become just an operating. Once the new paths are done, once the ADA is done, we'd be able to actually rein this into an operating millage type. Are there other reasons why you might have suggested five?
I'm not aware of the history of why a five-year versus a 10-year. That certainly is something I should look into. I don't know the history of why, because I think most of our other millages are a longer period than the five-year.
Right. Questions from any of the board? Look for, oh, no, we're not, we're not on this one. Never mind.
Okay.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Again, this is, public comment has ended. So next, we go on to reviewing the senior center millage renewal proposal. And that will be Christine Tavara.
Set this over here so we don't have it. Ooh, no, we haven't set it there. No accidental spills. Okay, thank you very much. So I thought I would start with our mission, which is to enrich lives with learning opportunities, provide services that support well-being and independence, and of course, building community. The next thing that I thought we should, is kind of the overarching discussion, I think, for tonight is the starting point for discussion for senior services at this point in our history is do we right-size services to resources or right-size resources for the needs of the older adults in our community? So I also would like to take a moment to thank the community for their ongoing support and note that in 2014, which was our first renewal, that we received 79.54% yes votes. And so that was pretty exciting. So thought I'd start us out on a real positive note. Okay, so one of the key things that's being studied nationally, regionally, the county is, is, has a big push now to, to look at the changes in our demographics. And this information is from, oh, great, I'm already off topic. Let me look at my notes. Senior Services operates a state-of-the-art senior center designed for active adults. This includes a warm water pool, indoor walking track, a fitness studio, fitness equipment, and multipurpose spaces for enrichment and social programs. This unique community focal point is known for strong customer satisfaction and prior to the pandemic, hosted 70,000 visits annually. Our eligibility for any program starts at 50, and half of the township or 20,000 residents are eligible. Over 10,000 have been involved in programs or services these past few years. We maintain a high resident contact annually, I think higher than possibly other departments, although it's not a competition. Active customers include those in their 50s through their 90s, and many volunteers, many residents volunteer with us as well. And again, the last thing I was going to say, which I jumped ahead, was the thanking, of course, the voters. So our demographics, though the community is experiencing some turnover, estimated 10 to 15% annually, we are a mature community. 31% of residents are age 55 or better, and 41% of households have someone aged 65 or more residing there. Increased longevity requires resources as most people plan to stay in their homes and in this community. Just a very quick touch on supportive services. We typically serve 26,000, what we call units of service in any given year. And a unit of service might be a ride to a medical appointment, a ride to the center for an exercise program or one of the drop-in programs, a hot meal delivered to a homebound senior, a friendly phone call or a safety check, a loan of a walker or a wheelchair, a support group, Medicare counseling, and there's quite a few others. I just thought I would keep it short tonight. Moving on to enrichment, which of course essentially is social connection, and we all heard so much about the negative impacts of isolation on older adults during the pandemic. So enrichment is really about social connection. And these also contribute to cognitive health. Programs are presentations, trips, special events, drop-in clubs, and this fall, we'll be offering 45 opportunities monthly. That's not as high as what we had prior to the pandemic, but we are rapidly moving in that direction. Next, we have our fitness programs, what we call land and aqua. Fitness is an investment in healthy aging. It's been shown to prevent disease, lower the risk of falls, improve mental health and well-being, strengthen social ties, and improve cognitive, cognitive function. We have quite a few, we have over 50 group classes, and the programs with the drop-in programs represent about 35% of our attendance at the center. And I will say, one of the silver linings of the pandemic was that we did go to virtual programming, and we have retained some of that. So although we don't, some people are still not coming back to the center for their fitness programs, they're doing it virtually, and some of them are out of state. So that's kind of a, excuse me, a nice thing that we've learned, and we're maintaining it in addition to welcoming people back to the center. Okay. So for our, the expense side of our budget, of course, our foundation is quality staff and a beautiful facility, which is reflected as the majority of our expenses. We do have a high level of part-time employees. We do have the lowest ranges across the township, not always a point of pride amongst our team, but it is true. And we have a slew of contract providers and instructors, so we are quite a cost-efficient department. We're very fortunate to have a high-quality center, but the related expenses were not known when the millage was first developed back in 2004. Facilities costs currently are 34% of expenses and are equivalent to 2/3 of our millage revenue. From 2009 to 19, we receive vital services like IT, accounting, payroll, human resources, building maintenance, grounds maintenance, motor pool services, et cetera, without contributing to the cost. They were not billed to our department. It's not, if not provided by those other departments 24/7, we would have still had to pay for them via private companies. This year, we'll pay $390,000 to maintain those services. We could not succeed without those services, but we now have a structural deficit. The millage pays for building costs, but covers only 22% of our staffing as it stands today. There are, there's no additional money for programs other than donations, grants, and participation fees. So the tax revenue is typically reliable. Earned incomes such as program fees, grants, donations, and sponsorships are of course variable. They depend on consumer choices, pricing, the economy, and other factors. Senior Services has weathered a number of financial challenges with new programs and rate increases to customers. People benefiting from programs and services contribute over and above their taxes with registration fees and co-pays. Fees are a sensitive issue and can decrease participation. Non-residents make up 5 to 8% of attendance and pay 25 to 40% higher fees. Residents currently pay $3 to $17 per visit, depending on their choice of programs. To balance the budget, we would have to increase all fees at least $6 per, or more per visit. So just some key points or key considerations. There is a misconception in the public that the millage covers all programs and services. And I, I'm regularly trying to impart the information that the millage equates to just over a half a penny from every dollar that Bloomfield Township taxpayers pay. Other enterprise-style funds like water and sewer, building inspection, BCTV are sole providers, and BTSS is not. Nine fitness facilities have opened since 2009 when we opened, and several clubs, local clubs, offer fitness as well. We do have a high level of contact with the community, and that's important. We'd like to sustain that. And some other things that sometimes come up, questions that we receive, a response might be not all taxpayers are eligible for the service, but the same is true of our fabulous schools that we have in Bloomfield Hills. All residents contribute to all township departments regardless of their level of interaction with them. Expansion of interest, participation, services, and the facility costs were not known or accounted for in the original millage determination. Current operations are unsustainable, and we're not really prepared for the, to address the growing needs. People are definitely living longer and staying in the community. And we talked a little bit about demographics earlier. Of course, SEMCOG predicts 30% growth of households with people over the age of 65 by 2045, which sounds like a long way away, but we know how fast time passes. Senior Services is a cost-effective investment. As I mentioned before, we turn our limited resources into wellness and independence for residents, either for ourselves or for our neighbors. And I find this community has a history of generosity for things that add value and provide key services for themselves or their neighbors. So the current structural deficit can be addressed with a modest increase to gain back losses from the rollbacks over the past 20 years and to offset the facilities costs that really were unknown at the time of the original millage. This action will sustain current programs and services and prevent significant budget deficits or service reduction. So at this point, I respectfully recommend that the senior service millage be considered for renewal with the small increase as stated, and that the board adopt the resolution approving the millage language presented. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions?
I mean, I'll ask a question. So if the millage is not increased, what are the impacts to the, I mean, I looked back in our notes from our study session, and I think I saw something that said that our reserves would be depleted by 2028?
That is correct.
And then we would have to supplement the budget from the general fund or cut the budget?
That would be for you folks to decide.
Right, but I would say that, that, we would be able to supplement the general, right?
If the money's there.
Well, but legally, we could.
Legally, sure.
Okay, all right.
You said something that caught my ear. You said some, some people are out of state? Are they residents that are just in a second?
They pay the non-resident rate. Like, we've had people that have been participating for years. I can think of one woman who moved out east to be near her children. So now she still registers for online classes and pays the non-resident rate and participates from, I forget the state that she's in, but she wanted to stay with her friends. So she's, she's not coming to the building, but she participates once a week and then pays the non-resident fee.
And if resident rates are going up, will non-resident rates go up significantly higher since they're not taxpayers?
Always, non-residents will pay significantly higher rates, yes. But I don't have a plan to raise rates right now for residents. That would be one thing that would likely have to occur if the millage was not increased.
But if the millage does increase and gets passed, residents are technically paying more. So then?
Well, they are.
Even if you're not going to change the fees for residents, we'll be raising the rates on the non-residents who aren't impacted by a tax increase?
Easily, we could do that, yes.
Well, usually isn't the, the rate is the rate for residents, but if you're a non-resident, there's an extra fee tacked on to the resident rate.
Correct, but we're going to be paying more.
Right.
Well, our rates, rates are different than taxes. So we're going to be paying higher taxes if this were to go through, non-residents don't. So they're not affected whatsoever unless you raise the non-resident rate.
So that would be one of the first projects that we do before this other, before any increase is implemented for residents, we would put together a small study to say what kind of percentage will we be increasing non-resident fees? Yes, that's a great point.
Okay, and then another thing I wanted to point out, because I know central services comes up a lot, just to point out where that came from and why that exists. Although we won the water lawsuit, something that came of that is that we have to be even more easily transparent, which is why we also have our financial page and everything. But the central services is an audit that is done, is it every two years? Every two years is figured out exactly where money is being spent, and then that is then charged back to that, and that is all a direct result of the water lawsuit. So that can't go away. Just because I know we get some people who say, lower it, go away with it. We literally can't change it. It is a reflection of a lawsuit. So that is, that is not going away.
Christine, is there anything more we can do in terms of promoting the senior center? Because I recently met a woman from West Bloomfield who said she never knew that she was able to use the facility, and she understood she'd have to pay more, and she was happy to do that, but she was asking me if I could explain it. And she just thought that she was not allowed, you know, no matter what, to use it. So I wonder if we could do a little bit more promotion to increase our numbers?
Absolutely, and I think that we have.
I know the right lady sitting here shaking her head in the audience.
Yes, now have a voice for the community.
Because I think it's, it's a great product that we have there, and, and yet, you know, we're trying to bring people back from the downturn of the pandemic, but also let people in neighboring communities, you know, we need to make them more aware that they can join even at a slightly higher cost.
Yeah, that's a point well taken. I do think that our first priority will be to reach out to residents, because I think, again, with 20,000 people over the age of 50, we probably could capture more of them with more of what we're planning. And I also want to, I always want to be sensitive, and I'm sure you hear it too, that there are some residents that are very sensitive about how, what percentage of non-residents are participating. So I'm always trying to be aware of that, and our priority and preference is always going to be for township residents.
Oh, absolutely, but I mean, and promoting it more for our own residents.
Yes.
Because I know a lot of people still, that live here, still don't really understand what all you offer there, and, and there's quite a lot.
That's kept secret.
Yeah.
Yeah, we mail right to their homes four times a year at a minimum, but, you know, if you don't need it or you, it doesn't click, it's probably in the recycle bin.
Also the misunderstanding of what a senior is.
Right.
Right.
Somebody who's 50 now, senior.
Yeah, we got a woman on the panel here.
I know, but a lot of people think 55 and higher, or 60 and higher, and realistically.
Or 65 and higher, really?
50 is senior.
So if I may, the kind of funny thing in the industry is you need to set it at 50 because it takes people 10 or 15 years to actually get their mind wrapped around that they could do something there. So if we waited to 65, we wouldn't have people till they're 80, so.
But yeah, still, but, but yeah, 2/3 of the, of the township residents can't use it.
Sorry, 2/3?
2/3 of the township residents.
No, half.
You said 31% township residents are 55.
But then there's a lot of us that are 50.
Yeah.
She went from the 55.
Okay, well, so that's why I rounded down to 2/3 because of the difference between 50 and 55, but the statistic was 31% of residents are 55.
Yes.
And over.
Half are 50 and over.
So 20% of our residents are between 50 and 55?
I don't have the charts in front of me, but we can look at SEMCOG. That's what, that's the, that's where I'm taking the information from.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the tail end of the, no, it's not even the, that's not even the boomers still.
We're Gen X, we're the forgotten ones.
Right.
Yeah.
But you had 50%, so I'll just go with the lower number. So 50% can't use it.
Yeah, 50% can.
Right, 50% can, but 50% can't.
Right.
But to one point, I've never been able to have children in the school system, but I still continue to pay for schools.
92% of the families.
But every time we talk about finding ways to better utilize the facility that we've paid for, I hear, well, we can't do it because of something that happened with the way, with the bond or, I mean, so who is paying this bond? Is the millage paying the bond?
Do you want to, because I was, the same, we were like, can we run it out?
I mean, I've been asking it every year since I've been like, why?
But you found out the bond language.
Yeah, as I understand it, when, when the ballot language went to approve the issuance of the bonds, there was language in there specifying what that money could be used for.
Because we were going to try and open it up on days and nights that it's not open to the general public.
So when the bond is paid off?
Which is going to be when? 33.
2030?
I don't, I don't know.
It's soon, soon relatively speaking. In my career, that's pretty soon.
Time flies.
So you're saying that once the bond is paid off, then we'd no longer be in violation of the bond? Then we could open it up or?
Because, yes, because we talked about playing with the ballot language right in front of you tonight to allow more things to happen, but when we dug deeper, we discovered it wasn't, that wasn't the issue.
So it's, so you're saying it's a?
The issue was the bond language, the ballot language for the bonds.
And to Christine's-
The ballot language for the bonds, or is, is it like a, like a representation or warranty in the bond indenture?
It might be there, too.
That says that the funds can't be used for-
My recollection was that there was a ballot issue to, to approve the bonds, to authorize the bonds. And it was in that, it was in that language that limited the scope of what you could do.
For a senior center.
Just to be clear, because I was looking back at the budget, I couldn't find where the payment for that bond was. So is, is there a separate debt payment that's not included in the, in the, in the senior center budget?
No, I think it's there.
I can't explain.
Debt retirement is there.
Do you know where that comes from?
I don't have the budget in front of me.
But does it come, he's asking, it's come out of millage or that?
Does it, does the budget, does the budget for the senior center, the senior, the senior services budget, I don't see any debt payment, any line item for debt payment. So I'm curious if we're paying the debt somewhere else.
Look down at the transfers out, the very bottom.
Yeah, the only one I see is Central Services.
I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
I mean, we can take this offline, but I'm just, as I was thinking about it, I pulled up the budget, and I don't, I don't see it. So is it under campus construction debt?
Yes.
Yeah, they were put together.
So it's one, so we're paying for the senior center, we're paying for, what was it, Station 3, or?
Station 1.
DPW.
DPW, all that's together in one bond.
And that's our portion of it.
And that's our portion of it. Okay, so then that's being paid through a debt millage, not through the senior services budget?
It is our senior services budget.
It's not coming out, I don't-
Okay. I could be wrong, and it would be great to-
But my point is, is that, but I understand, but, so I'm curious, when, you know, we're talking about the, the senior services, you're saying that we didn't anticipate the cost of the facility, and we need to increase for that, but we're not paying for the facility. That's being paid for in a separate millage.
So when I'm speaking about the costs, I'm talking about the utilities, the repairs, the boiler going out, that sort of thing.
Like even like the, the drive, the, the parking lot is failing. So a parking lot's gonna have to be replaced. So these kind of things aren't part of that, and that does come out of her budget.
Yeah. But, but mowing the lawn, snowplow, Jerry coming to fix the light bulb that goes out.
Yeah, but okay, but I mean, all that stuff, isn't that part of Central Services?
That is, yes.
Okay.
The debt is just to build it. She pays for everything since it's built.
Yes.
And then we found out that bond millage issue because Christine actually was trying to expand services.
Yeah.
To do like nights and weekends for anybody to come in supervised, if it's children, or to rent out for birthdays.
Yeah, we have a heated pool that's closed on Sundays, which could be used for birthday parties for kids. But apparently, we can't do that.
We even looked into the adult daycare center area being changed, because now that people have options to come to your house, it wasn't used as much. But that was very specific, too, that that area can't be touched, because you were looking at bringing in-
Physical therapy.
Physical therapy for seniors, like bringing in other services that could be used, and that got shut down, too. So we're trying to expand services, but we have to wait for-
We keep at it.
Yeah. But we have to wait for the debt to end.
Yeah. So I guess really, what I would say with regard to this is, I appreciate all of the work that you and your entire team do for the Senior Services Center, and I know how hard you've worked over this last year with coming up with really creative ideas to try to fundraise and get additional money so that you can meet the expenses that you have. And, I mean, it is frustrating, you know, for me being a trustee and seeing that we have this asset and thinking, you know, at the time that all of this was planned, it maybe wasn't thought through all the way, because here we are in 2022, and we are seeing the use of the facility declining and the costs increasing. So I just wonder, you know, at what point are we sort of, you know, putting good money after bad in the sense of, you know, what's gonna happen over the next 10 years? And then are costs gonna keep rising? And then people have so many options as to facilities that they can go to, or social clubs that they can join. So I just have concerns about the sustainability of it. But again, we're in a situation where we do have a bond that has to be paid. So it's just, it's, it's a tough position to be in, from where I stand. I'll say that.
So when you mentioned the expenses going up, are you talking about the facilities expenses?
Yeah, so exactly, like even what, you know, you were touching on, as far as not anticipating at the time that we entered into this and came up with this idea. So maybe there's even gonna be unexpected things that come up down the line.
Yeah. In 2004, when this first millage was created, we were, we were living in about 5,000 square feet in a 1950s elementary school. No one knew that there would be a center that's 24,000 square feet. So I can't really, I don't think I can really discount the leaders at that time, because just no one really knew. It was all new territory. So here we are, trying to do the very best we can.
Yes.
And I think there are, I mean, there are, there are other solutions. I mean, we could talk about general fund transfers, but I don't think that's palatable, and I'm not sure that it's sustainable either.
The danger with that is you see that whenever the general fund is at risk, things get cut.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say, you know, I don't know that maintenance and capital repairs weren't thought about or accounted for. It's just that when you get to a building that is now 15 years old, it's when you have to start paying for them. So the first 15 years or so of this facility was new. We didn't have those kinds of issues, but we're now looking at really the next 10 years, and this is when we have those kinds of expenses. A parking lot, you know, is going to last a period of time, but it's not going to, and you're gonna have to repair it. So we're now at the stage where the capital, we're, we're paying down the debt for the capital, for the building. But buildings, like people need attention as they age. I, I think one of the things, and Stephanie, you made a comment that the usage is going down. I think the only time the usage really went down was during the pandemic, and now they're building it up.
We're rebuilding. It's slow. I admit that it's slow, because there's still things in the news that people are nervous about.
I'm still wearing my mask. No, I mean, I-
You can see here, it's about happened, huh?
That was kind of my question that Brian brought up. So were the numbers really going down prior to the-
No, they were, there was, it was trajectory upward, definitely. And then-
In fact, weren't we at the point where we were, you were thinking, I remember as a trustee, there was even discussion of limiting, like letting residents first, because there were, there weren't enough spots, there weren't enough things. And so residents got to jump to be able to order first, register first, and then if there was empty spots, then non-residents. So it actually was before the pandemic thriving.
Right.
It's just that the costs weren't matching it.
Right.
If I can also make the comment that, you know, as we age as a community, and we are aging, and one of the goals for, you know, really, for good senior care is to, is to age in place, but to have a community that you can age in place, one of, so we're trying to provide that. Clearly, quite frankly, the safety paths are a great place to be able to age for everyone in the community, specifically for seniors. One of the things that I think is unique about the senior center is that as we have other health facilities in the, in the area, this one is the only one dedicated towards 50 and older. And I think as people age, they're probably a little reluctant to go into a club where there are a lot of younger people, and may be a little more intimidating. In addition, I think some of this equipment, like the pneumatic, is that pneumatic, weightlifting machines, are really geared specifically for seniors, so that there's pressure when the weights are coming down, and it's not bearing down the same. So I think this, this very well could be, is, and I think may look more to be a real asset, an attraction to keep people, which is exactly, I think, what we want to do, is for people's quality of life. I get that there are certain things that not everyone can use, but hopefully, given the profile of a Bloomfield resident, most Bloomfield residents, once they move into the community, stay here for a long time in the same house, or move within this community, and this is one of those, between the advanced life support and really being specialized in servicing seniors, this is just another service that we offer to our seniors that hopefully will keep them in our, in the community and keep our community strong and stable.
Yeah, I, I agree that it's a great asset for us, and even beyond keeping people physically active. The, I've been over there for your ice cream social, you know, having people have a, that social aspect, and people from their community, and from their close in age, or neighborhood, or whatever. I think there's a lot of value to that. And since we have specifically taken this downturn because of the pandemic, is this the kind of thing that when we talk about our ARPA funds, that we could possibly help the senior center on a temporary basis through some of the ARPA funds that we are gonna be talking about next month? Because the ARPA was all about the pandemic, and the senior center struggled because of the pandemic, and we're trying to bring it back. I know Christine's working hard. Is this the kind of thing that we can consider, some of the ARPA support?
You mean for the capital? Because it can't be for the, it can't be for ongoing things, because it's, it's not ever coming back again.
Right. But this, hopefully, we're just helping them over the hump because of, they got hurt by the pandemic, and they're coming back, but maybe they need a little-
We could do like the parking lot or something. So all of that is like one-time-
Right, whatever is appropriate, appropriate.
One-time things, yeah.
Yeah. Something to try and ease the budget in the short term, not something that they can count on for five or 10 years like a millage. But maybe that's something we could talk about, because your numbers were going up, and hopefully, you're, you're gonna turn that around. And especially, we've got extra support in the House now, so with Carrie, and, you know, work on some great things to bring the citizens back out.
Well, and we're finally, right now, fully staffed, the first time in two and a half years. So we dropped staff probably, I don't know, it was like 70%. So there were just a handful of us trying to maintain what we could maintain. And so since December, we've been able to almost every month try to refill those positions. And that's also needed to grow programs. You have to have staff who can offer the programs and manage them. So this fall is gonna be, we're so excited. There's so many things. We actually had a difficult time fitting everything into the fall catalog, so, which you all should have by now. Went, I think it went live Tuesday.
Just wanted to highlight, though, on the ARPA funds, just to make sure everyone knows that, that, that we're gonna be talking about all the different things, like our master plan, that we want the records management that we want. It didn't, it's not enough to cover the whole fire station from the 1970s that needs to, it's, that's, actually doesn't even cover one station. So it would be to help some of that. So there's, I think, last I saw, there was $15 or $16 million worth of capital investments that's needed. So it doesn't technically cover a full project, but it'll get some of our little ones full, done, like the master plan, the records keeping, all that, and then hopefully chip away at one or two of the others. But yeah, it's, just to remind everybody, it's not for ongoing operating costs, and it's never gonna be replaced again. It's a one-time. We were lucky to get it because we're not entitled. Townships under 50,000 are not entitled, so we actually got, thankfully, got some.
But it is something that we were granted because of the pandemic, and so it's something I, I think we could at least look into, that there'd be some short-term support-
But not for her operating. It can't be for operating, just for like, I think the only capital on right now is the parking lot.
Something, something short-term, hopefully.
I think just that, so that was 1.2 million. So that's the thing, a lot of people don't realize, these are expensive because we're in an inflation. We're in, we're in an area where everything costs more. So just the parking lot alone is 1.27 million.
And that was like six months ago.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm scared to look at it now. But, but yeah, that, there'll be a lot for us to discuss and chip away at, hopefully to make as much of an impact as we can with the money.
Well, I mean, I don't know when you, if, if you want to have more debate when we talk about the actual ballot language, or if you want to discuss things now.
No, just if you have questions with-
I, I don't have-
If not, we can then debate.
Okay. I mean, I don't, I don't have any questions for Christine. I just want to say, and, you know, for the record, I think you're phenomenal. You're an inspiring leader. I think you do great things on shoestring. So just know that, that, I, I think that personally, so I, I'm not speaking for anybody else here, but-
Well, I second that, just for the record.
Thank you.
Your enthusiasm is kind of infectious when I've been over to the senior center, that you, just your whole personality, it's just so welcoming and, and so friendly. And I think that's a wonderful thing, and that's what we need. We want people to feel welcome when they come to the senior center.
Thank you. I want to just-
Better sit down before I turn bright red.
I just want to briefly add, too, that the senior center, you know, was the location for a lot of election activity this past week. It hosted the, the absentee ballot counting board, which is a staff of about 35 people, also a precinct. And, you know, your staff was responsive and flexible. We only approached you last, you know, the week before last about this idea, and managed to, to pull it off with the support of your, of your team. And they, as I said, were very responsive to everything, and were great hosts. And we look forward to being back there in November. And on the topic itself, I mean, the senior center is a really valuable community service that we provide, and I think it would be a shame to let it diminish or, or shrink. You know, the, the budget deficit is what it is, and, and is in part due to the necessity of paying transfer payments. And, you know, I think your presentation covers it pretty well. You've got a lot of fixed costs, which are a reality, and the variable costs are related primarily to the services provided. I mean, they go up when we provide more services. So if we don't support it now, I mean, there, there will be implications. Either we're gonna spend down the, the reserves to nothing, which isn't really, I think, a good way to do it. Increase fees, which I don't think is a good way to do it. In fact, if we were to increase the millage, I personally would like to see less resident fees, or at least a commitment to no more resident fees, and an increase in non-resident fees. That's commensurate with the amount of increase in the, the tax amount. So it's, you know, it's used by a lot of people. The clubs around here are, are nice, they're beautiful, but, you know, a lot of people can't afford to be members of these clubs. And as you said, as they, as we age, it's more and more important to have something that's welcoming, and the clubs aren't built around, you know, that, that demographic. And so, you know, this is, it's an important decision for us to make. It will be, have direct kind of the, the culture of the community for a decade to come. And so I'd be looking forward to talking to it in more detail when we get to the, the actual language for the millage. So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Christine.
A pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will get into the, consider the resolution to approve the submission of the proposal to elections on November 8, and approve ballot language for proposal of the renewal of the safety path. And we're gonna have that presented by Clerk Brook.
Okay. There's not really much more to add. You may recall, and as Trustee Schostak mentioned, on March 28, 2022, we had a study session where the challenge, fiscal challenges of the senior center and, and other, and all the other millages were discussed. The specific amounts that are in this millage renewal proposal, you see before you are the same numbers that were discussed and presented at that study session. They've been out there now for months. And, and that's what's being asked for the number, the first one here we're talking about is a safety path, which is a five-year, straight, strict, plain-old renewal. And the language here, if we had passed this, will be sent to the, the county. The deadline is, I think, a week from tomorrow?
August 16.
August 16. So this is our last chance to get anything on the, as far as a regular scheduled board meeting, to get anything on the ballot for November.
And then, did you want to go in, I know some of us, I was even, I didn't know this until getting involved, that we don't actually get to write the ballot language. It's actually determined by statutes. Do you want to cover, because I think some think that we wrote the-
Yeah, there is, there's a certain amount of drafting involved. I drafted, but I drafted specifically to comply with MCL 211.24F, which has specific requirements of things that have to be in there. People read it and say, oh, there's gotta be a simpler way of saying it.
I wish.
But I wish, exactly. The fact of the matter is, is there's essentially a checklist of items that you have to make sure are in the ballot language. So while it looks complicated, it, it needs to be that way in order to comply with what the statute requires. So while I draft it, I'm drafting it with an eye on making sure we comply with the statute, so. I draft it, I'm drafting it with an eye on making sure we comply with the statute.
And to your point now, let the discussions and debates start.
Thank you. I just want to say, I think the safety paths are a major asset to the community. When I moved into Bloomfield Township, there were no safety paths. And to see how they have developed over the years and how there's been certainly people on the east side and the west side who come to us requesting that they have safety paths and how we've certainly made an effort to that there's connectivity is really something that has brought the community together. And also is, it's nice to see it connects to some of the surrounding communities. It's been an asset, not only for seniors, as we've discussed, which is very important, but also it's an, it's something that's very attractive to bringing younger families in. I use them all, I use the safety pass all the time and see younger families with their children, see seniors just walking. And so it's just a much safer way to get exercise and not having them. So I'm very much in favor of them, always been very supportive. And I think that it's, I'm certainly in favor of the the language that we put this on the ballot.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I'd like to echo that. I completely agree. The safety paths are widely used. They were great. You know, I am so glad that a board all these years ago decided to go ahead and invest in safety paths. You know, we live in a park-like setting, but we don't have any parks. In my mind, the safety paths really play play a park-like role for us. And our, the master plan for safety paths is not yet done. There's more to build. And of course, they need to be maintained and repaired, and we have to have ADA compliance. And so I, you know, fully support the idea of renewing the safety path, path millage and and continuing to enhance our community with this investment.
I've always been very pro safety path. We've lived here since before they started. And in fact, we moved into dirt roads and I found out how much fun it wasn't to push a stroller on dirt roads and became my road paving chair. So we went from dirt roads, which made it kind of horrible and kids riding bikes on dirt's not fun. We paved our roads and then the safety path program came. And I've always been a supporter as a resident. Olivia knows I, I have a bee line to Olivia and I'm like, oh, there's a heaved place here. And oh, there's this stick sticking way out in the middle. It's going to hit somebody. The the response has been wonderful whenever I've reported an issue. We walk them all the time, four or five days a week at least, in different directions. And I think it's just a wonderful asset for families, for bikers, for just, it's a really simple, quick way to get some exercise. And when you get beyond your own subdivision safely, not having to walk in streets. And it does, it does connect us everywhere. So I'm a supporter.
When we first moved in and we had children, it was before the safety paths. And I remember pushing my daughter down Pickering, which is still what you have to do on the street, but down then in a stroller along Franklin Road to get to the cider mill, which isn't really a, wasn't the greatest thing in the shoulder. It wasn't easy to push and it wasn't too safe to do. Jan Roncelli pushed and promoted safety paths and got them on the ballot and got them to be to start with. And I can now say that I'm blessed with grandchildren and walk with my daughter, who I was once, excuse me, pushing in a stroller with her children and now can do it very safely in a with a, on the safety path. And again, just to think that we do have, you know, people traversing, it's not just within the neighborhood, but around the community. And these allow us to do that and really do make us, I think, a much stronger community. It gets people from subdivision to subdivision, from subdivision to shopping center, to school, to cider mill, to all kinds of different things. So I strongly support this. And I'll make a motion to put it on the ballot.
Is there anyone else that needs to speak?
Well, we can do discussion after the motion.
Okay. So motion by Treasurer Keeps, support by trustee Barnett.
Can we get discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm markedly less sanguine about the safety paths than my colleagues. I agree they're an important asset. I think that they can be helpful. And obviously during the pandemic, they were used widely, much more so than we had ever anticipated. You know, where I come in is, you know, we have to be discerning in how we spend our money. I was supportive of the now passed millage renewal and increase for public safety. I listened to the case made by our chiefs and agreed with them that it merited an increase of taxpayer dollars. I'm a little less supportive of these in terms of the safety path. I was hoping that we wouldn't be able to renew it. We could just fold it into the road or something else and just maintain it over time. Obviously with the ADA compliance issue, that's something that we have to do, you know, and so we have to do it. So I will support this five-year renewal. But I would like to, you know, spend more time working with staff and administration on maybe curtailing it so that it's not renewed in five years. But I just, I, I think that we have other things that we can prioritize. So that's where I come out.
I, I mean, I share what everybody on the board has said as far as the importance of them. But I also do agree with trustee Schostak that we, it is going to be important for us to revisit a master plan for the township so we can really start to see what our residents are going to prioritize going into the future.
And just for my point, I live in the area where it was one of the original ones. So I was, you are correct, Jan was a proponent of this in the beginning. So I used to come to all those meetings. Because at first they were even thinking sidewalks. And I know with a sister who lived in a city that lawsuits were prevalent when somebody slipped on their sidewalk. I was very happy to see that safety paths were a thing. So the residents aren't liable. And I can tell you, in 20 years, I have met a lot of people from them walking in front of my house and and all of that. My mother benefits from it in that she can't move very much. So she can talk to people from the porch. The one thing I would would like to see in the future is that as we're done building out, as the ADA is done, is to curtail it into an operational, a much smaller one. The one thing when you have infrastructure, though, is to, you have to maintain it, not just for the fact that it's our duty, but also there are legal ramifications. And we did look at the cost of ripping up 70 miles of of safety path. And I guarantee you, there were quite a few millages that would pay out. But if we could eventually get it down to the point where it's just maintaining. And then I know they're very happy and successful because we get other communities around us begging us to talk to their people, especially our timbit donut hole of Bloomfield Hills. They're constantly asking us to reach out to their people and beg them to connect because they don't enjoy that they have to walk in the township, not the hills. But as somebody who's lived with them for 20 years, I know there's a lot of people who are fearful when they come to their area. They're amazing. People do not steal your stuff. It is, it is really helpful and it does build communities. And for sure during COVID, it was amazing to be able to leave your home and safely walk in your, in your area and know that that you were okay during that time. So thank you to those who came up with the idea 20 some years ago. But yeah, hopefully in the future, as you mentioned, that it wouldn't be as large as it is and we could kind of curtail it back and just, my biggest fear is it going into the general fund, it having to be cut some year. And now we're facing lawsuits because we're not maintaining our own infrastructure. That's just a, a long-term planner's view of, of the long term.
You made a good point, too. I just want to mention that, you know, that you recall there were discussions about about having a lower number.
Yeah.
And it just didn't work from a budget standpoint and the obligations that we have under the ADA and the continuation of the maintenance and then the continued build out of the master plan. I mean, so there was some thought that, you know, maybe this should be lower and why isn't it lower? And we pushed on that, on those issues. It wasn't just a number out of thin air. So in the end, to continue the goals of the plan and implement the the master plan and repair and improve from ADA perspective, this was sort of the number that was settled upon as necessary. And Olivia's materials present very well exactly where this money, why this money is needed. And so I just wanted to mention that, too. I mean, we did all sit around and try to think of, maybe we could do a lower number. But it just, it wasn't really in the cards to, if we wanted to stay true to the purpose and plan that for ways we're presented to begin with.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'd look for a vote. Do we have to do a roll call on a ballot language?
You should.
Yeah. Roll call votes. Those are you.
Trustee Faqui.
Yes.
Trustee Schostak.
Yes.
Treasurer Keeps.
Yes.
Trustee Barnett.
Yes.
Trustee Murray.
Yes.
I'm a yes as well.
Yes.
Pass of seven zero.
Perfect. So next we'll go on to considering the resolution to approve submission of proposal to elections on November 8th and approve ballot language for proposal to renew and increase the senior services. And again, that will be Clerk Brooke.
There's really nothing much to add besides what I mentioned the first time was that this was an item discussed in fairly great detail at the study session, March 28. Mr. Schostak has mentioned some of the items from that study session. This proposal is consistent exactly with those numbers that were discussed at that time. And this is the last regular board meeting before the required filing date with county if we want this to appear on the, on the November ballot.
I want, I want someone to come out and say something nice first.
I like to end with something.
Okay. Well, look, all right. So I, you know, in foreshadowing what I, you know, what I said before about prioritization, I mean, I think that the services that are offered by the seniors that are important and are incredible in what they do, I just think that now is not the time to present another increase. I think one thing we need to be mindful of is that, you know, we are in a recession. And yet, next year, everyone's property taxes are going to go up by 5% because of where we are in inflation. And so even though the value of their property isn't going to go up, their property taxes are going to go up by 5%. And we just passed, we asked the community to pass an increase for public safety. I felt, like I said, that the, the business case there justified it. I just think that now is not the time to be asking for another increase. I'd like to, I'd be happy to get involved to brainstorm other opportunities, whether it's through sponsorships or additional fundraising or something like that, to find some additional funds. But I just, you know, I don't think, I don't think now's the time. And I'm also concerned from an optics perspective that if we ask for the increase and it gets voted down, granted, we could come back and we have some time, but I, you know, then the whole millage gets lost. So we're not separating it, you know, for a renewal and an increase is separate things. I don't think, I mean, basically you'd be asking for a separate new millage, right? You can't, you can't give multiple choice options on a ballot. So I understand that. But where I'm coming out, and I'm sure I'll, I'll be in the minority here, but I just don't think now's the time for an increase. I think we got to prioritize our spending. And I think we need to find other ways. And, you know, when we sit down and budget for next year, we can take money from the general fund if everyone thinks it's important enough. And we can find some other place to cut. So that's, that's where I come out. But I, again, I want to emphasize that I don't in any way mean to disparage the great work that Christine does or the, the assets of the community that it is. I just think, I think we have to prioritize. And I, public safety was one thing. You know, I just, that's, that's where I come out.
Anybody else?
Yes. Thank you, Chris, for your presentation and everything that you and your staff do. Senior Center has been an asset to the community since the day you were working in the schools. And then certainly had the opportunity, the residents wanted to have a larger facility with more services that could be provided. And we have, what, 50% of our residents have the opportunity to use the senior center. And it's getting older, as, as Brian has made it very clear, just like any building, it has additional, additional expenses as a result, whether it's the parking lot or anything else. It just needs structural improvements and maintenance like a home or any office building. I understand what you're saying, Michael, but the community has invested a great deal of, of money in the senior center and they do use it. It took an unfortunate hit, like many businesses did during the pandemic. And it hurt your, hurt the senior center more than any of the other departments, which I think is very clear. But and the reason I asked the question, although like any good attorney would do, is I knew the answer before I asked it. Of course, you've been very busy and your use was going up and you had many, many people utilizing the facility prior to the pandemic. And I know you're working hard to get the numbers back up, and I'm confident that you will. But, you know, the senior center, I believe, is another very valuable asset that we have. Fortunately, many people who live here want to stay here. That's why we have so many new homes being built that are on one level. People can move to them and stay here. And it's an attractive community. And I think, again, this is something that shows that we value our seniors. It's a great facility, great services, and I support it.
Any else? Anything? Janet?
Well, as I alluded to, I think earlier on, I do support the idea of this senior services millage. It's one of the smaller, if not the smallest, millage we have on the books. I mean, it's point, we're asking to increase it, yes, to .33. And I think we get a lot for that investment. And a lot of residents use it. And if we allow it to continue to sit in a deficit situation, there's going to be increased costs and less usage, less programs, or a combination of both those things. And it's going to directly impact, you know, the seniors in the community. If I were looking to want to save more money, and I appreciate that idea, and ask for less in taxes, and I appreciate that idea, this isn't where I would do it on it, you know, actually. You know, the, the safety path mills is, you know, .4511, this is .33. And they're both important. They're really related to each other and about, you know, defining who we are as a community and what's important to us. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's an important investment. And we're still, we're two thirds of the way into a 30-year bond. And due to this, you know, the financial situation and the restraints of the bond, it does need some additional operating flexibility to continue to provide the services it does and to, and hopefully enhance those services for the residents. So I don't really think this would be the place to try to find some savings. And yes, our, you know, the, the Headley and so forth will allow us potentially to increase, you know, the value of homes will go up, you know, up to 5%, no more. But our costs are really actually going up faster than that. So it's, we're kind of pedaling backward. I don't want my taxes to go up 5%. But I can say, too, that I did the math and I'm still paying significantly less today than I was paying in 2007. Because I'm a long-term resident and the value of my house, house went down a lot at that time. And the way the Headley works, of course, we're protected from any dramatic changes. In order to get the funding it needs, we need to ask for a little bit more in the mills. And I think it's a good investment. I think our community sees, you know, gets direct, they receive direct services from this investment. And so I think it's a, it's a good thing to do and I support it. And so I think it's a, it's a good thing to do, and I support it.
I'd just like to say that I think it's a great asset, and it's unfortunate, the timing of the pandemic and that the building now is going to need repairs, but it's not like something we can turn our back on, that facility or the building, you know, unless we were to close it and mothball it, and I don't see that happening. So I think we need to support it, and especially in the short run, because of the serious hit that it took from the pandemic, more so than other parts of the community. The Senior Center really was shut down, and it's going to take time to come back. And I think we need to support it because I don't think we can, we might want to raise non-resident fees a little bit, because that was something we discussed. But in terms of resident fees, we cannot keep raising that, because I know I've used the center, and I've studied the fees, I've, Christine knows I've done the pool programs. You're going to outpace the clubs. And on the other hand, you know, because it will become not a good value, but on the other hand, I believe it was trustee Shostak said, that it's less intimidating and more inviting. It's smaller, it's more age-appropriate, the machines are specific to aging individuals. You know, it's a very important facility, and the long-term vision was to have it, and I think we need to support it with this millage and see it over the hump of the pandemic, and then reevaluate the situation. You know, if we continue to see it struggle financially, then we have to take some other measures. But, and I think, you know, if there's something through the possibly small, one-item thing, I know it would be long-term, but we can talk about it with the ARPA. But in the meantime, I think we have to support it, because it's important to our community. Look at the age of our community. Half of our community is eligible to use it, whether they know about it or not, and that's something we need to work on, too, because not everybody knows, not everybody's visited and seen what a great asset is. I can't tell you that swimming in a warm pool, looking at the snow outside, is just a peaceful thing. And I think a lot of people just don't realize what a little gem we have built there. So I support it. Does anyone have anything to add?
I mean, I guess I'll just say one more, one thing to, just when trustee Marie said that, you know, they don't know, then maybe it raises a question in my mind, maybe they do know, and they're just, you know, they're not using it for whatever reason. And then we're talking about costs. I mean, you have, like, Planet Fitness, I think it's $10 a month for a membership there. Again, like I was saying when we were talking about this earlier, this is a difficult decision for me, because it is an important asset. We do want to maintain it, because I think that its potential is not being met with the restricted use that's placed on it because of the bond language. And I just want to be mindful of the fact that we don't know what's to come as far as recession, inflation, property taxes, what the township revenue is going to look like. So I think it would be prudent for the board to leave as much leeway as possible as far as township revenue is concerned, and not necessarily limit it to just this, this one use.
And ironically, it's because of cost savings that I support schools and senior programs. When you look at who uses EMS the most, seniors. How do you keep them from needing to go to the hospital? Health and wellness. So the areas such as us that have healthy seniors, you're reducing the cost of needing to raise public safety even higher. Schools, as somebody who, and I get this, because seniors come to me and say, why do I have to pay for schools? Because their kids aren't in them anymore. I have people of kid age who say, why do I have to pay for seniors? I'm not using it. I am someone who has not benefited from any of it, just, you know. Up until this month, or a month ago, I didn't have children in the school systems, and I wasn't able even as a trustee to use the Senior Center. But cost effectiveness, you have less crime when you have educated children, and you have less EMS runs and less health issues with seniors when you have healthy seniors. So the cost that it would take on us to increase public safety by cutting these health and wellness programs is why I support it, even though, again, I don't use the schools, and it wasn't until just now that I could use this. I will say that I tried to set my mother and my aunt up at Planet Fitness about 10 years ago. One was in her 60s, one was in her 70s. It took 10 minutes of being there for them to say, absolutely not, and never went back. They paid an entire year that day, $99, and they never went back, because it is not somewhere that somebody over, over a certain age is going to go, when you have really athletic young people running circles around them. So it's, it's not, it's different. As somebody who has a senior in her home, I grew up with grandparents in our home, it might be just that, I know Christine and I talk about how we need more intergenerational programs for kids to see how things affect seniors. But it is because of the safety, the cost that will save on public safety from less EMS runs and less issues with an unhealthy population, and I don't just mean working out, I mean mental wellness. There is nothing more obvious with COVID of isolation, and we have people who don't work out there. They show up and they play in a band. They show up and they play bridge together. They show up. These are people that would be at home in depression if they were alone. So it's actually because of the cost savings, which is of public safety, which is why I support it.
Can I make another?
Yeah.
So you guys are obviously very passionate about this, and I feel that, and I don't disagree with you. My point in not supporting the increase is only that we're here to govern and we're here to prioritize, and if this is your priority, then let's, next year, let's find the $500,000 in our $25 million general fund budget, and then we can put that money in there. I just think going back to the residents for another increase in the economic situation that we're in is just, I think we could, we could do better. So, but if this is a priority, I hear the passion. I don't disagree with anything that you guys have said. I'd say, let's, let's find room, let's, you know, we got a $25 million general fund budget, find half a million dollars. So.
So are you supporting it without an increase?
I would, I would support it without an increase. I think that we can't just end it, right? But I just, I don't think we can go back without an increase. But like I said, I'm sure I'm in the minority on that one.
Well, I guess I, I think it's important that we, as a board, I think, try to speak together. I can tell you that if we, I guess there's a couple things to look at. Number one, we have, we have an obligation to pay a bond. And we have a building that is there, so we'd be paying for something anyway if we didn't operate it. That's maybe, I think that's a negative way of looking at it. The real way of looking at it is, if we didn't have it today, would we want to do this? And I think with an aging community, with a community that doesn't have, and I don't take issue, I don't have an issue with this, we don't have a park system. A lot of communities have what they would call parks and wrecks. I would call this not a park, but a wreck. And it's a recreational area for seniors who, just this week, on the radio and the newspaper, talking about how loneliness, especially for older men, is a major issue, and it's a major health issue. The pandemic, as Supervisor Walsh has referred to, has spoken about, clearly has exposed it for everyone. I think for aging men, this gives a place for people to go. It's different, quite frankly, than just going to a health facility, because this isn't just about working out. Matter of fact, I would imagine that's probably not the majority of where the resources are really used. It's really used as a recreational community center for the elder people in our community. The younger people have schools. Middle-aged people, because everyone else has work and other things to do, but if we want people to retire here, and again, to live here, then, you know, there needs to be resources for them to be able to utilize. I can tell you, I know firsthand, working with Christine for a number of years, she's been very resourceful in terms of, even when you look at the newsletter, and quite frankly, I wasn't a big proponent of it, but she really pushed in terms of having advertising and doing different things in there to bring money in, in terms of getting grants, in terms of different fundraisers. I know she is very active, as is her staff, in terms of trying to find unique ways to be able to provide for this service. I would call it a need. And if we didn't have it, it'd be something that we'd be sorely missing. So, you know, we, the pandemic clearly created a hit here, but that's not really what we're talking about. We're talking about going forward for 10 years, and how do we want to fund it? Or how do we not want to fund it? And I guess, my sense is, we shouldn't shortchange it. And I think by not supporting the full millage as proposed, I quite frankly think it's being shortchanged. I guess, Michael, you're, you're right. We could just do a renewal, and maybe it's something we can talk about. And as time goes on, if we need more money elsewhere, we could raise it in the general and give it here, or we could raise a new increase just for the Senior Center. But the reality is, I think it's been shown that with the capital improvements that are going to be needed, with the way it's being run and how, that we're going to need to sustain what we're doing, we're going to need the renewal, plus we're going to need the new to get back. And by the way, this, this quote-unquote increase is only giving us back up to where we would have been without it being rolled back. So it's not like, you know, I get Headley, and it's, and that's the reason and all of that, but I think when you look at the kinds of expenses that this facility is going to be undertaking, both capital improvements, which are well above inflation in terms of those areas, and the wages that'll have to be paid, hopefully, the wages will even out maybe at 5% over time as time goes on. I think, you know, we're, people debate whether we're in a recession now, we're clearly in a challenging economic time, and we're clearly in a challenging climate that everything seems to be happening. And I think that's even more why it's necessary to have a sense of community for people to be able to come together. And I would really encourage this board to try to act in unison and, you know, discuss a way that we can do that.
I will say, one thing I definitely agree with Michael on is that, once we can expand, I would like to expand. So I guess I'm looking at this as, this gets us to the same time that the debt is done. What is it, 2032? So you're talking 10 years left of this debt, and once that bond millage is done, we can expand where we've talked about, okay, during the day, kids are in school, adult and under-50s and such are working, keep that, senior time, and then nights and weekends, open to everybody of all ages. We've already looked into how much insurance will go up, and it's worth it. So I guess we're looking at two different plans, like, let's get through this debt, let's get this done now, but already start now working on what will this facility be once your handcuffs are off, in which case we can, because, you know, the kids being in school, they're not going to be using it during the day. So it could still save 50 and up of that time, but then open it up. So in the long run, I would love that to be a community center.
And I agree with you, Danny. And I agree with you that getting us through the bond and paying it off opens up all sorts of opportunities, how it can be used, things that have been discussed, and I'm sure there could be other ideas, that will open it up to other people in the community, bring in more resources, and getting back. So I think that's very important, as far as moving forward and passing the millage. But the other thing you said, which was, I totally agree with, it's not just about working out, it's about, it's not just about exercise, it's mental stimulation, it's socializing, it's being, having the opportunity to be around people your own age and being mentally stimulated. You don't get that at a, at a Planet Fitness or any other workout facility. You do get it at the Senior Center. And when this was put on the ballot years ago, to increase the size and the scope of the facility, it was so people would have that opportunity, because the community valued that. And I think the community still values it. So again, I'm in favor of doing what we can do to keep it moving forward. And then at the same time, we can have conversations about what kind of plan would we like to see when the bond is paid off. An ongoing discussion, because we have some time, but at least we can start that discussion.
And hopefully, we'll start it a couple years before, where we could plan and do some community outreach, you know, do some surveys, do some meetings of what do you want to see this as a community center?
Yeah. I mean-
Can I add? I wanted, you know, just mention, too, a little more sort of background. The reason why we know there's a limitation on the usage of the building related, that's in the bond, is because Supervisor Walsh spent a bunch of time with, you know, with the director, Trevaro, and talking about, how can we expand the use of this building? How can we raise more revenue by getting more people in? How can we do all these things? And, you know, it turns out that we're limited, you know, so I got to, you know, thank you for spending the time to actually, before asking for additional money in the millage, to explore all of those options. And, you know, there was eventually a legal barrier that wasn't immediately located.
Always comes down to Dirk.
Was immediately located, but, but the effort was there. I mean, you know, so this isn't the first, you know, we're not saying, oh, well, there's a structural deficit, let's ask for more money. There were lots of other efforts first, before bringing this idea to the, to the full board to look at expanding usage and expanding revenue through other methods. And unfortunately, our hands are tied, and not through lack of effort, but because it's just the way it is. And so I think that, I think that's an important point to note.
Well, another thing, too, is that the transportation that the Senior Center provides, there are some seniors that that might be their only opportunity, if they're no longer comfortable driving or able to drive. The fact that you can use the transportation, whether it's for an exercise class to stay more fit, or to play cards, or just to sit and have a cup of coffee with your friend or make new friends. The, the mental health, I think, is very much an equal part to the physical health. And, you know, people that can't get out of their homes, I mean, we saw how that's extremely devastating in the pandemic, because it was scary to go anywhere. And as we're opening back up with more safety and more care, that transportation is something that you're not going to get to Starbucks, or you're not going to get to Planet Fitness, or anywhere else. You just don't come by that unless you call, like, a personal Uber. This is, it's directed at our aging population, and our population shows that we have that need.
Your point about transportation, I know one thing that came up was, and you mentioned Uber, some of the transportation is used to get people to their doctor's appointments. So they no longer have a driver's license, and nobody lives with them. They're a widower, a widower, they don't have children nearby. And Uber, there are some bad drivers out there, who have been known, even in our area, as close as, I believe, Maple and Cranbrook, to injure and do worse to people. So there is a fear, when you're a senior, being taken advantage of, and by having a stranger come to your home that's not affiliated with somebody safe, like your township, that is a fear that some reached out and thanked that Christine continued that whenever she could. And I want to echo what Clerk Brook said, Christine spent a lot of time, I mean, we, I will tell you, at first, I came at her and said, let's figure out the age thing. Then we got the age block. Then, okay, now let's figure out what other services we can bring. And she came up with a group that could do physical therapy, and nope, we can't do that. She spent months, months coming up, and she would get an idea, and it would get shut down. Thanks, Dirk. That's going to be like my thanks, Obama. Thanks, Dirk. But she did not, I appreciate that you weren't rigid and said, no, this is the way it's always been. That is one thing, I am blessed, that when I come with these ideas of, I need you to change your entire thing, they go with it and they try and figure it out. We just kept hitting that bond millage rollback, or bond millage issue. But I, she's already got a lot of great ideas to bring to us, once we can start having those ideas of how we can expand and make it more of a community center. Because I think, in the long run, being able to help everybody is where I think, I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't want that, we're just stuck.
I mean, I love the enthusiasm, I love the passion that I'm hearing. I just wish we could find a way to take it out of the rest of the budget and not hit the taxpayers for another increase. But the other thing that I'll throw out there, because the treasurer said that we could vote it with or without the increase, the other option is simply to table this, because we have until August of '24 to vote to renew it. Is that not the case?
You'd have to have a special election. So this was the save $100,000.
Well, in August of '24, there's going to be an election.
Well, this one had to be done by last year.
This is from the, what was it, the presentation that Jason put together? Senior Services, Last Possible- last possible renewal ballot, August 24.
But you stopped, how did Jason have it figured out, where you stopped collecting or something?
The last, the last collection would be December '23, but we could still vote in
August of '24 and put it onto the December.
You just missed out on that year's worth of revenue.
That's right. No, we collected in December '23.
You'd stop collecting in December.
We'd collect it in December '23, we'd vote it in August of '24, and then we'd collect it in December. I'm not.
The problem is then, what if it doesn't pass?
Yes.
Then you've got a problem.
100%. But I'm just, I'm just saying that there is a third option.
But I think you're right.
That's my reclass as well.
And maybe the financial, maybe the financial, you know, the economy will be different at that point, so.
But again, if it doesn't pass, you have.
We don't want to do it next year.
No, I'm not, I am certainly not suggesting that we do a special election for this because it would cost almost as much in the election as we'd be, I mean, 100%, but.
Unless you wouldn't be getting as many.
And I'm not, again, I'm not endorsing that either, I'm just saying that there is that third option. So we could vote tonight for either with or without the increase, or we could.
One thing I would be interested in knowing is what the numbers actually are. I mean, in the board packet, it says, you know, half are eligible, which would be 20,000 residents, and then it says something like 10,000 have used it over the past years. So, I mean, we're talking about, you know, it's used so much and the importance of it in the community. I'm curious, what is that actually quantified? And one other thing that sort of came to my mind as we were talking about all the ways that we had to think about raising revenue, that also signals to me that we don't have the participation that we think we have, which is why we have to grasp at additional revenue.
So I think what we miss, I mean, though we can vote in 2024, what we miss is the, in this, this December, we'd be locking in another year of deficit spending, because we, if we put this on the ballot and it passes, then the amount levied would be consistent with the 3.33 and bridge the gap.
I'm sorry, I don't think that's true.
It's going to get rolled back, well, I shouldn't say for sure.
It'll roll back, you know, but.
Likely it is.
Right, if we, if we put this on the ballot, then we levy in December at the higher, new higher rate.
It's when it technically expires. So you, like, for example.
No, we wouldn't start, we wouldn't start levying at the higher rate until December of '24.
The number's going to be lower.
That's right.
If we approve this now, we're still collecting the same amount for two years.
Still collecting the same deficit amount the next two years.
But if you put on the ballot for August of '24, what I'm saying is if that number gets rolled back, which is likely to get rolled back, it's going to be a smaller number.
Yeah, you wouldn't be asking for the same amount in '24.
That's right. You wouldn't be asking for the .273.
Well, okay, then you could just change the amount that you're asking for the increase to make up the difference.
An even higher increase.
You're right. So this levy actually would not go.
I'm not a proponent, I'm just saying that, that.
What does that get us? You still have the 10, I mean, if we didn't have the 10-year.
I'm saying that maybe the economic situation will be different, and asking residents to pay more at that point will be more palatable, that's all I'm saying. But I'm not endorsing, you know, I'm not suggesting that we wait till the last minute, and then if it doesn't pass, we don't have a millage, and that's, so I, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying that there is that option.
You know, we're talking about a .027 increase in mils, which.
Point 10.
Point 10.
I'm sorry, point, point 1, I'm sorry. Again, we're talking about pennies at this point in terms of taxes for collective, and quite frankly, it's one thing if we're as individuals, but as a collective, that is what we as a community collectively can do together, is bind together. I mean, if these were tens of dollars, or twenties, or hundreds of dollars, we're talking about, you know, minuscule amounts.
Yeah, the average taxpayer's going to pay about $20 more for this increase.
For this particular, okay.
I get it.
And I don't even think, I don't even think it's that, but, but the reality is, we're into this, we're 20 years into this.
Okay.
So I'm just, I guess, struggling with how we can all be together and be responsible in terms of understanding that we have debt to be able to pay for, and quite frankly, you know, the community has committed to this a number of times, and I just think it, quite frankly, would be short-sighted not to continue on the path that we've been along for almost 20 years now, so I just.
I don't want to belabor the point or beat a dead horse, but this millage increase and any of the millage would not be going to pay for the bond, that you're, the construction bond is a separate millage.
It's being in part funded by these revenues.
No, it's not, it's a separate millage, it's a separate fund.
It is a separate fund. However, you have to have this in order to still provide, I mean, we're, at that point, we're paying for a bond that is doing nothing for us, it's paying for.
I understand, and I, again, the last thing I'll say is to reiterate, I hear the passion, I feel it, let's find a way to fund it out of the general fund, that's all I'm saying, and that's.
So what do you want to cut?
Let's look at the budget and we'll go through it. I mean, this is not the time to debate the budget, but I'm saying if this is, if this is true.
Well, it is because you're bringing it up.
But it is, because you would have to cut with the first things that go are things like household hazardous waste, and that's what some people are more passionate about. But that's what I'm saying, when you're talking about, let's just find it.
Well, okay, but.
Unfortunately, that's the stuff people love too.
Okay, but let's prioritize. What's the more, what's more important?
I think that's what it comes down to, is really what are the priorities of the community, and that's why I'm even curious about what is the actual use of that building, because I think that helps show us how much our community is prioritizing it.
Well, I think by putting it on for renewal and increase, we're asking the community to let us know if it's a priority.
That's 100% correct.
Well, and I think.
That's what it comes down to.
The other thing Michael's saying is that maybe in two years, people will feel different, but this is a renewal that won't hit people, it won't affect your taxes, until the renewal, which is two years out, till 2024.
I hear you.
So we're just sort of planning forward because, you know, like we said, we've got a lot invested in that facility, and to get us over the hump with the bond, and then if the senior center cannot support itself without the extra support, then that's something we need to look at at that time.
I just think that electorally, we just passed an increase with only, only 63%. I say only because in the past, public safety would always get 80%, and.
Actually, in the past, one time it got 30%. When you got, when you look recently, there was a failure in 2019 because people didn't like the way it was done.
Okay, I mean.
So it actually is an exact reversal of the SAD.
That's apples and oranges.
It's not, though. It's public safety, just one was done through the general fund, people don't like that, and even though people said it should be directed, or it should be dedicated, it should be under 10 mils. You give that, and now you're going to yell that for being dedicated under 10 mils.
No, I agree, but, I mean, Neil's point is 100% on point. We put this out there, let the community tell us if this is a priority, if they want to pay the increase to support the senior center, they'll approve it, and if they won't, they won't. I mean, and then we'll have another time to come back in the next two years to offer it maybe without an increase. I hear what you're saying, I'm just, I just got to say what I think, and that's what I'm here to do, and you guys say what you think, and.
But to be honest, you just pointed out why we, the beauty of doing this is if it doesn't pass, then you do have time in August of '23 to just do a straight renewal.
Okay.
And you're still protected. But if we wait until then, we're not protected.
I understand, and I guess, I keep saying this is the last thing I'm going to say, the last thing I'm going to say is, this doesn't need to be unanimous. If the board as a whole feels in consensus that this is what we want to do, then that's what we'll do, and I'll support what the board decides, but I, this is my opinion.
I respect your opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always have.
We don't have to agree.
You made some good arguments.
Well, that's how we get along, so.
Okay.
That's right.
Anyway, unless there's more discussion, I would like to make the motion that we approve submission of the proposal to electors on November 8, 2022, in approved ballot language for proposal to renew and increase the senior services millage.
Motion by Trustee Barnett.
Support.
Support by Clerk Brook. All in favor?
Do a roll call again?
Oh, sorry, roll call.
Trustee Barnett?
Yes.
Trustee Murray?
Yes.
Clerk Brook, I'm yes. Trustee Faqui?
No.
Trustee Shostak?
No.
Treasurer Keeps?
Yes.
Supervisor Walsh?
Yes.
That passes 5-2, did I get that right?
Yep.
That does pass, so we'll go on to the next one of considering approval of the multi-delinquent special assessments, and that will be Treasurer Keeps.
Okay, thank you. Every year, we place on the December taxes items that haven't been paid prior to that time. Some have been invoiced and some, like roads, which are in essence stated once when the SAD is put out, but we don't invoice annually. So these actually then go on the December bills. We notice people in advance, matter of fact, people will be receiving mail sometime this week probably, just stating that these invoices are out there. So this just form, this allows the board to formally put it on the December millage, and that allows the Treasury staff to invoice, to then be able to prepare and submit the notice, the amounts to the county by the beginning of September, so they can then do the proper accounting for the taxes, for the tax bills. So this is a normal event, and by the way, this, this is for the lake boards, for the road SEDs, for utility streetlights, for yard maintenance, and other ordinance violations, and some sewer connections, that's what is included in the amounts. So they're not just delinquencies.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So do we invoice or bill all of the special assessments separately? Like we, these are the people who didn't pay on those bills?
So special assessments, we bill once when the special assessment initially is formed, and then annually, we quote-unquote "don't." However, we've already sent these, this notice out, so in essence, we, I mean, we're not required to, we do do it, and then because we've already sent them out, we're going to need to turn it over to the county if they don't pay it. Most people like, I don't say most, some people like to pay it with their winter taxes, and this is just the mechanism to be able to put it on the winter taxes. So what I'm concerned is, I don't want someone to go through this list and say, so-and-so didn't pay and they're delinquent in their payments, because that isn't the case with the SEDs. I just want to be really clear that those are not delinquencies.
Right, because I just assumed that the SEDs were automatically added to their winter bills.
They're not automatically unless we do it.
And this doesn't.
I, so there are some people who just proactively remember every year that they need to make a payment?
There's that, and some people pay them off anyway.
Right, okay. No, I think that's, that's good to know.
What about the other things like the lake boards and the lighting? Is that something that people only get the one-time bill, and then they just have to pay it, and then, or it gets added to their taxes, or is that a delinquency?
The different ones then have different issues. So most of these others do get invoices, and then again, if they're not paid by a certain point, some have interest applied in addition, some the interest is already included, but again, this just gives us the mechanism then to put it on to the winter tax bill.
Make a motion to approve the special assessment rule as presented.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Shostak. Support by Trustee Barnett. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass.
The resolution, sorry, I didn't realize there was an actual resolution. Motion was for the resolution.
Okay.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yep, sorry.
And then next is approving payroll and vouchers. We've all had a chance to look at those for August 8. If there are no changes or questions, I'd love for a motion.
So moved.
By Trustee Shostak.
Support.
Support by Trustee Faqui. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass in our last motion.
I move we adjourn.
For Clerk Brook, motion to adjourn.
Discussion.
Support by Trustee Barnett.
You like the passion?
Love the passion for the adjournment.
Michael wants more, more discussion.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.